City of College Place, City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 11, 2020. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Nyhagen would like to say a few words to start us off.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much that we can come and do the business of the city. We again thank you for our marvelous staff in this committee. We ask that we do your will, and thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, good evening, everyone. All right, let's move along to public comment areas. So this time is for any person of the public would like to share some information or speak to the city council, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you would have three to five minutes to speak.
Good evening, Brian Thorson with Hayden Homes. I do have an agenda on, an item on the agenda tonight, so I don't know if this is the place for me to speak about it or wait until that agenda item is up.
It's fine, it's fine, go ahead and share it now, so we can take it into consideration.
All right. So this letter's about the closeout stormwater and groundwater solution and indemnity agreement related to Homestead Village Plan Unit Development Phase Two and Three, which is before you tonight. So, dear City of College Place, City Council members, good evening, I'm Brian Thorson, Land Development Manager for Hayden Homes in our South Washington region. I would like to first start off by thanking the city council and members of city staff, specifically Mike Rizzatello, Robert Gordon, Paul Hartwig, and John Rickert for their efforts in helping Hayden Homes through the difficult challenges we've been dealing with at Homestead Village. Without their help, we may not be in the same spot we are today. 2019, last year, marked Hayden Homes' 30-year anniversary. Nearly 25 of these years have been spent here in College Place in Wall Walla Valley, building almost 700 homes. When we add in Milton Free Water, the total in the Wall Walla Valley tops nearly 800 homes. My reason for telling you this isn't to brag about how many homes we've built, but rather to inform you that we've been around for 30 years, with most of them here in your community. We are invested in this community and plan to build here for another 30 years and beyond. Although I can appreciate everything that the city has helped us with, there is still one item in this agreement before you tonight that we disagree with. Number 10 of the modified agreement states that Doones Avenue, the stormwater system and the underdrain system must be fully construction, constructed and operational, and Doones Avenue open to the public before any building permits unlocks 40 through 47 and tracks One and Two of Phase 3D and Phase 3E are issued. During several emails back and forth with Robert Gordon today regarding this exact condition, Mr. Gordon did state that Phase 3E portion of this condition can be removed, but the city still feels that all of the improvements, including the revised storm system, must be complete prior to the issuance of building permits. Hayden Homes disagrees and feels that we should be allowed to submit and obtain building permits after the lower portion of Doones Road is paved. We have proposed to complete the storm system concurrently as the homes are being constructed. Our reasoning for this is weather-related. If we have to wait to obtain building permits until after the storm system is complete, we may not be able to start building homes on these lots until September or October. If we're able to obtain building permits after the road is paved, we could obtain building permits and start building as early as May or June. The pond improvements cannot start until the pond area has dried out. Last year, the pond didn't fully dry out until August. Hayden Homes already has a surety in place for these incomplete Homestead Village Phase 3D improvements, and now the city wants to delay Hayden Homes by not issuing building permits until the improvements are complete. Please consider the surety that is already in place for the incomplete improvements and the fact that Hayden Homes is a good steward of the communities in which we build and remove Condition Number 10 in its entirety from the agreement in front of you tonight, or at the very least allow building permits to be submitted and obtained upon the completion of the asphalt paving. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will be here throughout, so if you have any questions for me, feel free to ask. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we need to approve the consent agenda, which includes...
We're supposed to close the public comment.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we aren't. Actually, before I do close, let me ask, if there's anyone else that would like to speak to the city council, please do step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public comment?
So...
No, we don't need a motion? Okay, so, thank you. Okay, then moving on now to the consent agenda. Looking to approve the agenda for today, February 11, 2020, approve the council minutes from January 20, 2020, approve the council minutes from February 4, 2020 workshop, the 2020 internal and external committee assignments, the EMS contract for 2020 levy distribution that was presented by Chief Winter, and also we'd like to excuse the absence of Councilmember Cleveland. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other comments or questions? All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as is, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted. Is Rhonda here? Okay, next on the agenda, we have a library update by Rhonda Gold.
Good evening, council. I have a little bit of show and tell for you tonight. First thing I wanted to show you is a very, very, very rough sketch of how the library will be laid out, so I will distribute that. Okay, thank you. Okay, and some of you may have already seen the carpet sample.
Oh, I have not.
Okay, I will pass that around, and I also have a sample of what the shelving color is and the end panels for the portal shelving, so we'll take a look at all that. That's it for now. Okay, so I wanted to just show you the very, very rough floor plan, in case you had any questions or any comments or concerns. The bottom of the page is the front entrance, and as you enter on the right-hand side, and my writing is atrocious and I apologize for that, there's our circulation desk, and that's a U shape there. Then we'll have a computer table with three workstations for patrons to use, the internet and to search and to look up items in our catalog. Then there will be an adult reading section. We've ordered two tablet armchairs with the flip-top arms, so they're multipurpose for patrons to use. We also ordered two of the chairs for the young adult area as well. The section where the adults will be, there's a section, a very small section that's marked off, mags and newspapers, so that'll be the magazine, newspaper reading area. Then we have a small office there. To the left of the adult reading section will be the DVD shelving. Then the restroom's back there, back entrance. Going back around is the meeting room. We have a, we'll have a table for, I have eight chairs here, I think we'll have at least 10. We'll also have a projector, a screen installed, a large whiteboard, a bulletin board on the outside of this wall for local notices, for people to post. Then going forward will be the young adult section, and shelving will be all along the one wall towards the front. We are delineating these sections with portable shelving units with the assumption being that if there's a large program, we can increase the space in the room and push these shelving units aside so that there's more space for program attendance. There's one small one that'll be about six feet that'll delineate the adult section from the young adult section, three in the adult section, just for probably nonfiction, and then two in the children's area and to distinguish that from the adult section. And then a small table with chairs for kids. I believe we are going to order four-foot benches for the two windows at the location adjacent to the door, and that will pretty much take you around to the whole building. Does anybody have any questions on that? Yes.
Is there a reference desk or is that probably circulation?
That'll be part of the circulation desk, so there'll be two staff usually there at one time.
Do you know what the maximum capacity size is going to be, the number of people allowed?
Not yet, that'll be determined by probably the fire marshal.
Okay.
But I would guess maybe 50.
Okay.
50 safely.
How many computers?
We'll have three computers for patron use when we first open, and then once Plaza closes, we'll bring some more over.
All right, any other questions or comments from the school?
Okay, so then the other bit I wanted to tell you about is that in addition to what we have here, we have placed the order for the shelving that's supposed to arrive next month. We are ordering more furniture from Brothman's over in the Tri-Cities, the office supply store there. We need to order basically everything except the two armchairs or the four armchairs that have been ordered already, so we'll be placing a nice little order with Brothman's for that. We purchased ceiling tiles, we have, I'm not sure how many we ordered, but we did order, there's a grid in there, there's no grid in here that I can compare it to, but you know how the ceiling tiles are hung. The grid in there was black, that's why we selected a lighter color wood to have some brightness in there. So we ordered the tiles from Home Depot and they were supposed to arrive last Friday, but they're not in yet, so we will probably be getting them installed later this week. So that's done. My IT staff has been working on networking and all of the equipment for the technology has been at least ordered and is at our office already. The other thing that the guys have done has been working with our catalog vendor to add another location to our catalog. So if you search on our catalog, in some instances you will see a CP designation, and that means, you know, items that have been purchased will have, for the College Place branch, will have that designation. So we'll be able to, you know, if someone would like a book from the College Place branch, they can request that, or if College Place has a book and another location wants it, they can request it from that branch. And then we'll also be able to change the designation from Plaza for College Place residents so that their home library is College Place when the time comes. We also ordered signage from Megapixel this last week and placed the order for that. There'll be a big outdoor sign above the main door. I believe we ordered a six-foot sign, six-foot diameter sign, so that's coming. We also ordered a sign for the back that's not lit, but you know, anyone coming that way from, you know, either hot thief or heading over to the shopping area, they'll see the sign, and then also sign for that, I don't know, they call it the monument, they call it the marquee, adjacent to the road. So it's all coming, coming together, and we're still looking at May 1st for opening. And we've ordered one set of books from our book vendor already. They have what is called opening day collections for new branches and new libraries, so they tailor the collection to a specific community, so we had to give them some demographics of College Place, you know, size, population statistics, things like that. So they hand-select things for us, and then we get, you know, a basic collection to start out with when we open. So we'll have that for adults, kids, and young adults and nonfiction coming.
Very good.
So, does anybody have any other questions?
No questions?
No?
All right, all right. Thank you.
Thank you much.
Great updates, thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Yeah, thank you for coming again. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to some action items. First item on the agenda, Mr. Rizzatello's going to speak about the Green Tank Irrigation District.
Okay, thank you. So with this project, it basically entails development of a consolidation feasibility study between City of College Place and Green Tank Irrigation District. As you all may or may not know, Green Tank Irrigation District covers an area bounded by Wallula Avenue to the north, C Street to the south, Myra Road to the east, and then a jagged line that goes like from Dampson and Rose Street and then College Avenue to the west. And they have three wells in their system. They have service lines that are in various modes of maintenance, and what this study will do is essentially help both the city council and then the Green Tank Irrigation District Board understand if it's in the mutual best interest to consolidate. If that were to occur, that would basically be by a vote of the people inside the Green Tank Irrigation District, and then also council may vote on your side as well. The consolidation feasibility study, there was one bidder on it who is RH2. They are the ones who are working on the well projects, so they are well-versed in our water system, met with the Green Tank Irrigation District Board to grade the proposal. They were satisfied with that, and this project is fully paid for by a State Department of Health feasibility consolidation grant that we received, so...
Do we have any questions or comments from Mr. Rizzatello?
And we'll know the results of this by the end of the year, that's the estimate.
And Savi?
I just want to, once again, compliment you on your grant achieving skills.
Thanks.
I am in awe.
Absolutely.
So, and then I would like to move to adopt resolution number 20-004, which authorizes the city administrator to sign a contract with RH2 Engineering to complete a consolidation feasibility study between the City of College Place and the Green Tank Irrigation District.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted. All right, Mr. Rizzatello, next is the electric vehicle charger installation contract.
Okay, this is another project that's actually paid for with a grant from Pacific Power. Bill Clemmons is here today from Pacific Power, so thank you for that. And they have a little fund the installation of a charger right here at the municipal campus. This was competitively bid, there were three proposals, Cabin Creek Electric, Wall Wall Electric, and Hayes Electric. It was graded by staff. Hayes was significantly under budget on this item, which is a good thing, so that is what is before you to award this to Hayes so we could get a charger installed here at a said municipal campus.
Do we have any, Mr. Peterson?
Mike, the location is, once again...
Location will be basically out by the bushes over here along the parking lot right here, so if you, if you may recall a couple months ago, Pacific Power actually paid for a feasibility study, it'd be done, where would be the best place to put it, and what would be the general dynamics of installing it, and this proposal basically follows what's in that installation plan, so it'll be immediately across the parking lot, basically where the bushes are at, and the line will be run from that feeder line we have out in front of the fire department, the little pole box we installed back when the farmer's market was in the parking lot here, and there'll be a line, basically it runs from there next to the bushes over to the parking stall over here.
So I guess, yeah, I raise that question. We probably, I'm guessing sometime in the future, are going to have an all-electric pursuit vehicle in our fleet, so to charge those in the future, maybe even in the near future perhaps, that location would work for the charging of patrol vehicles also?
Yeah, I mean, it would work for that, and I mean, over time, this technology's getting cheaper and there's a bunch of grants for it from the state and everywhere else, so, I mean, even, I'm not sure if we needed it to be very easy to get additional monies from a source to cover for additional stations. This is our second jump into doing that, the first one was with REA over at the Express Gas Station.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Any other questions? Mike, remind me, is this charger going to be different than the one that's over at Express, or is it the same type of charger?
It runs a little bit quicker, the dynamics are in the spec sheet that's in board docs.
It's a little faster?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Mr. Peterson?
I'd move to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Hayes Electric for installation of electric vehicle chargers at the College Place Municipal Complex.
Okay, we have a first and a second. We have any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted, and again, appreciation to Pacific Power for your generosity, we do appreciate it. Okay, Lions Park Community Center.
Okay, so this agreement replaces a 20-year-old agreement, it actually ends at the end of this month, so we updated it to reflect current operations and trends, met with the Lions Club, they're agreeable to it. Basically just has reporting requirements, so we see what's actually going on over there. Should there be any taxes like on operations and so forth, they're responsible for that in the future, there's liability clauses in there, also language to that, we get first dibs on that building for events, because it is a community center, and then also some language benefits them as well, where if we are having community events where it does have a significant difference in their electric bill, that we cover the difference, because we learned that some of the power outlets that we were actually running farmer's market activities from that we thought was hooked to the city meter was actually hooked to the Lions Club meter. Yeah, well, that's how they wired stuff back in the day, so we deal with it, so that's why, so that's why that clause is in there. And then also, because we reiterated that it is a community center, mainly because the State Recreation Conservation Office, they've been a bit difficult to deal with on this one, because I guess way back in the day when some grant money was accepted for Lions Park, at the time, the community center wasn't there, and now it is, and they were trying to say it was an improvement that they didn't approve, and they were actually trying to come to us about tearing it down, but I was able to work with them to instead do a building form and just make sure that we reiterated it is in fact a community center. The agreement is not in that 20-year period anymore, because stuff can change over 20 years, so that's just bad, so this is in five-year increments with automatic renewals unless there's a 60-day notice that either party can issue to terminate some agreement, so, pretty standard, it is taken off a Lions Club agreement from squim, so...
So they have no opposition to anything that was in the agreement?
No, if you look, they've already signed it.
They've signed, I saw that half-signed, I just wanted to make sure that they didn't express, because I know there was some discussion about some maintenance, upkeeping of the facility.
We worked, we worked on that, so if you look in there, there is a percentage of revenue that's dedicated to maintenance and upkeep, and then it was also some additional questions about basically approvals, because before they could just essentially make improvements as they see fit, but it is a city facility, so we put in there that just that they just need written permission via email, just so we know what actually is going on, because that is on the city insurance policy, so I mean, we are insuring that building, something comes upon us to know what improvements are actually in it.
Yep. Okay, any questions or comments regarding the Lions Park Community Center?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 20-005, which permits the mayor to sign on the screen, College Place Lions Club or the Community Center of Golden Gate.
All second. All right, great, we have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted. Thank you for working on that, Mike.
Yeah.
All right, and another, another grant, and positive for us, you want to talk about the Pacific Power Blue Sky Grant Award?
So this is a partial grant, we put in a larger one for a solar array, and we're working with McKinstry, who is a design consultant, to scale it down for what we're giving, and it sounds like it's going to work fine. This is for the city-owned property out of Maple and Whitman by the New Well, and the concept is to put a solar array, they did an investment grade audit about a year ago, they found that we could easily make the money back on it in essence from the power it would generate, and the city owns it, so we put in for a Pacific Power Blue Sky Grant. We were awarded it about $100,000, so we will be able to scale the project to, in essence, meet the grant amounts we're given, and we're working with McKinstry on that said project. So this is basically to accept the grant from Pacific Power, so that money is obligated and ours, so...
Mr. Peterson?
The, with the location of it to the well, does this solar array at its maximum develop enough amperage to run the well motor?
Well, so the way these solar arrays work is this isn't going to be hooked directly into a well, it's going to be hooked into a Pacific Power power grid, and then we basically get credits back in essence for the power we're essentially generating off of the solar array, just because with the solar arrays from what I've been told with McKinstry, especially when your city, it's only running three wells, you have times where you're rolling power off of it, and you have other times where you aren't, especially with the frequency drives we're running and stuff like that, it would cause issues, so this would be basically hooked into the grid.
I guess I was asking more, Mike, in an emergency, if we lost all power, and if there was any way to make a, I'm just, there arising a connection between it to the well or whether we'd even handle it as far as the amperage?
I would have talked McKinstry about that.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Do you have a generator on the well?
Uh, yeah, yeah, there's a gen...
If you lose the grid, you don't have the generator. If you lose the grid, you don't have the solar.
Yeah, so with both of the new wells, generators are included in the design bill for both of those, so we won't have that generation ability.
I was just curious with this proximity to the, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Sherman?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 20-006, which authorizes the city administrator to sign a grant to bring up Pacific Power for the Blue Sky Grant for up to $100,000.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? Other than I love that we're moving into the modern age, we're, all right, all in favor, say aye. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. The motion is carried and adopted.
Thank you, Pacific Power.
Yes, thank you, Pacific Power. Yeah, this is great for the city. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Gordon, you have to speak about the Homestead Closeout Stormwater and Groundwater Solution.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And we've had a bit of a preview already from Mr. Thorson. We appreciate that. We are a little bit on opposite ends of the spectrum here in terms of what our recommendations would be. So tonight, I'm actually approaching council to stick with our existing language in the agreement. One of the things that we, some of the background here is Phase 3 actually has five sub-phases. And we've been actually working through a number of issues on stormwater throughout this phase. We have actually gone from 3A to 3B to 3C. 3D is what we're currently in and what we're trying to do. We met back on January 16th with Brian and some of the other principals there at Hayden Homes to discuss how to move forward so they could get on to Phase 3E as well. So the backdrop is, is we have deferred stormwater improvements for a variety of reasons. In some cases, we had high groundwater we didn't expect. There was spilling on to the airport property and other situation. But in any event, we've tried to allow for them to continue to move forward. We're kind of at the end of the, we're kind of at the end of the development with Phase So here's 3A, and actually we deferred stormwater improvements for these two lots into Phase 3. That was one agreement. When it came to do 3B, it turned out we were getting water spilling on to the airport properties, so we did an indemnity agreement with them to allow them to move forward. They did 3C, which is up on the bluff. There's a bluff right here. This area down here is down below. This is up above. 3C is just dry well, it's not a big deal, no issues. And then 3D is the one we're currently on right now. And we've been through a couple of agreements on that. One is the MOU most recently, in which we said the stormwater facilities would have to be constructed, including an interim facility that's pumping water back to Dome Creek. But the stormwater facilities were supposed to have been constructed before we started issuing building permits. It's been a long process and we've provided them some relief on that and actually have issued the building permits. And so what we're looking at now is allowing them to move forward on this last phase, but we do want them to put into place the stormwater facilities. And they have constructed the underdrain facilities, that's operational, that's draining some of the, or will be operational, draining some of the water in this area. But the stormwater facility, which will be placed somewhere around here, will actually be routing water back to Dome Creek. And we, I would recommend we see that in place before we move forward. It's a little bit getting the cart before the horse if you put the buildings and structures out there, even if they're in tandem. It also kind of confuses things in terms of our operations as a staff. We get a lot of, we've had situations occur before where we're issuing building permits, people are waiting to get into their building, into their homes, but the infrastructure's maybe not in place yet, the storm structures in this case.
So the facility is just a pumping station?
I'm sorry, the what?
The facility you're talking about?
No, actually it's a little more sophisticated than that. It's actually a wet pond for treatment. And then as it fills up, it goes into a number of storms-
And it's filtration and then?
Well, it actually treats it through the pond because we have such high groundwater, it really can't go anywhere. So it treats it through the pond, then it flows into a storm cell system, which is underground, which will be on this area right here. And then from there, it overflows at a meter rate to Dome Creek. Okay, we can do that pre-development flows under our MPDS permit. We can distribute, so that's the idea, the concept.
So what's the treatment that they do in the pond?
It's biological treatment. It just goes through the pond, there's a bunch of different vegetation and that's considered treatment.
So that works?
Yeah. So really, what Hayden Homes would like to do, as I understand it, is actually begins construction on these lots right here. And what we're saying is, hmm, we really need to get the storm system in there and make it operational. They can, they could actually dump water into this open area here, which is the existing pond, but because of the history of what we have there, the fact that we're at the end of the project, and the fact that we've been working on getting this in place for, ever since the beginning of Phase 3, we really, I really recommend that you go ahead and stick with the agreement as it's written and that we require the storm facilities going before we issue building permits.
Just for the beginner in the group?
Yeah.
If I understand correctly, you're allowing them to proceed with 3E, which is up on the bluff, that there's not really any flooding issue?
Correct.
So no risk of water. But building in the lower area where you're closer to water table, not having those facilities there poses some risks or anything like that?
Probably not an immediate inundation risk to be honest, just because there is a pond there, but it's not the final structure. We really need to have that in place. This will be the final structure. The ultimate goal, and I know Hayden Homes has been working on this with the property owners, to put a regional facility out here. And one of our original agreements stipulated that they could not actually develop on any of these properties. They have, they're thinking about an alternate kind of a product on this property. And we've actually released that as well, as an opportunity, as long as they get this facility in. So we'd like to see that in.
And you'd hear that they won't be able to start construction without later in the spring or summer, which, you know, they lose three months on it.
It throws their schedule off in terms of construction, in terms of maybe optimizing their construction schedule. It depends on how quickly it dries out. And this year, even in spite of all the rain we've had, my observation is we haven't had quite the level of rainfall and snow towards the end here, but we'll see. We may, most of the flooding has been actually as a result of a snowstorm.
Ms. Selby and then Mr. Bobbitt.
So where will the construction stormwater go? Because both, I mean, I assume with, well, actually either with or without the new stormwaters, because you may not want the construction stormwater clogging up your nice new facility.
Good point. What will happen is they'll submit a plan with their design for that. Typically, I suspect that'll probably go in that existing pond during construction and they'll hold it there. I'm not sure it's going to infiltrate for a long time, so, but it'll be contained. I don't know what they're going to propose at this point, but I'm supposing it's probably the best route forward.
Mr. Bobbitt?
So the stormwater infrastructure, is that just for Phase 3D or is that incorporating all of Phase 3E?
That's a good question. It's actually for Phase 3D and it's not for the full phase. If you recall, most of this area here is up on the bluff. So that's served by dry wells. Okay, and then we also have some drains along the edge of the bluff here that drain down into this area. But most of the water is taken care of on this area up here in dry wells. This facility here will treat all of these areas here. We just have very, very high groundwater too at the same time. And so that groundwater, although we'll be draining it off in the vicinity of these streets, still sets a very high level and when stormwater comes in, it just doesn't infiltrate. In fact, we had situations last year where water in this pond and water here at 4th Street were pretty much at the same level and they were right at the gutter line. So we're talking water at the street level, like groundwater, at certain times of the year, under certain circumstances. So that's a concern. And so we'd like to get that stormwater taken off, placed into storage and off-site.
So that's specifically 3D, Phase 3D?
Yes.
You want that infrastructure in place before issuing permits to build on those sites?
The rest of this area here that drains down and the Phase 1A and 2 that come down to this area are going into our treatment pond, but it's really not, well, it's functioning more so now, but we've had too much water and it's been spilling. And so their interim stormwater system that they place there pumps water all the way up here to one of our existing swales and then it, then discharges back to Domes at pre-development rates.
So basically you're saying we don't have all of the infrastructure in place?
No, we do not.
Okay.
No, we do not. This will be, this facility here will be, if you will, the final until we can somehow get to a regional facility, which will allow the whole thing to operate better. And this, the other thing to mention is the indemnity agreement that Hayden Homes has signed that identifies a city. Once that regional facility goes in and we're good with it, it goes away. Okay, it's no longer an issue for them.
Mr. Thorson, you want to make a comment?
So the one thing I wanted to point out, along Domes Avenue, we still have to provide a cement-treated base on that. So Mr. Gordon was talking about the groundwater levels being high and kind of exceeding the surface of the existing surface out there. But one of the things that we have to do before we pave, and we're asking for building permits after we pave, is we're going to provide the city with an 18-inch section of this cement-treated base. So we rototill up the entire subgrade of the road, drop cement powder in there, re-grade it, and it basically bridges that 18 inches. One, it's structural, but two, it kind of helps keep groundwater and everything else back down. So we'll have the 18 inches of CTV, we'll have 13 inches of crushed rock, and then we're also going to have 3 inches of asphalt on top of that. So, I mean, this road's going to be built thoroughly. I mean, the CTV is an additional cost to Hayden Homes. That wasn't part of the original design, part of our original budget, that's going to cost about $150,000. So, I mean, this whole thing, just where the developers, where the builders, we're taking on this risk, but it's a costly project and we're just asking, the faster that we can kind of start getting returns back on investments by being able to pull building permits and start houses sooner for us is a huge deal. And I don't think the city's at risk at all. I mean, Robert did say that that pond is in place, there's catch basins, everything's routed to this existing pond. There's no flooding that's going to happen. In the area of these seven lots, we have the underdrain system, which is part of that agreement in the subject there, is there is a pipe system in this area that we have laterals going to all seven of these lots that will connect to foundation drains. Once our foundation is placed, we'll put a foundation drain around the house, connect it to the storm pipe, and then that storm pipe is connected and runs clear out here, back out to the pond and wetland area over in 3B. So not only do we have that system in place to take any water away from these houses, there is still the large pond that's currently constructed that we just are going to rebuild, revise with this new plan once the pond dries out. And like I said earlier, last year, it was in August when the groundwater's finally receded enough and the pond dried out to where equipment could actually get down in there and you could start being productive in the work that we need to do. Thank you.
Mr. Bobbitt?
I'm just curious with this recent rain and flooding and stuff, what's going on with it?
The interim stormwater facility that, I actually went and checked on Friday when we were having the storm. It's pumping like it's supposed to and it's maintaining the levels, so we didn't have an issue here. I did not check to see it was going downstream on Domes, but I didn't see any immediate flooding. So that part's working. It's effective.
And those lots they're requesting permits on, it sounds like there is some infrastructure to actually do.
They have the underdrain system in place for those. It's not hooked up obviously until they construct. Concern here is more, this swale area is very high groundwater. They can put the road in, assuming it works. To be honest, I'm a little concerned still, and maybe this is just me and maybe not all the engineers, but you put heavy material on basically, I don't know, flooded silts. It still has a tendency, there is a tendency, it could still settle. Hopefully it'll bridge. That's kind of a risk they may be taking. But the bottom line is, we don't know what's going to happen as far as rainfall, we don't know what's going to happen as far as building permits, when things will be sold. It really is getting the cart before the horse. We really need to have stormwater facilities there in place to protect those homes. If there's ever an issue, if there's, if we get delayed or for whatever reason, there is bonding on the project, but bond's just been deferred. Really, we should have the stormwater facilities up and running. As designed, it's the last phase. It's time. Otherwise, we're going to be in a situation where, in many cases, we're going to have people calling and if it's not done on time, we're going to have to turn them down, they can't have occupancy permits, and that's where staffing's up.
Mr. Peterson?
Simon, yeah, thank you. Mr. Gordon, correct me where my memory starts to fail me here, but would we pass this resolution back of ways? It was not necessarily around any specific contractor, it wasn't around any specific stormwater issue. This was, this was an initiative by us to make certain that things are completed and don't trail off as lots are built on and that contractors are held to a standard going forward. And I support your position here. You start to get down into the weeds a bit here where you do one-off because of this contractor, you do one-off because of this situation or this specific water level or whatever. We passed this with the understanding that we wanted to make sure that things are complete and in place.
Correct.
Going forward, regardless of what the construction is and that it meets the safety and it meets the criteria we have, where things are not, in the future even, that things are not left undone.
Correct.
That puts developments at risk and whatnot. So I think that's the recommendation of the original.
It is, and really, it's part of it's just, we just can't anticipate, can't anticipate the phasing, what's going to happen precisely. It just makes all the sense in the world to me to make sure we have supporting infrastructure in place before we start allowing those lots to be built, especially when we've been working so long at getting up with the system, which, to be honest, I'm glad to see we actually have something I think's going to work after all the effort we've been going through. But we need to get it in place and I don't really want to push this off any further.
Why hasn't this been built yet? Why, I mean, it sounds like there's been a lot of stuff going on here. I think I understand the risk on our side or the citizen's side, I also understand the financial concern you have. I'm curious why this hasn't been built? It seems like there's been an opportunity to do that. Is there something I'm missing here?
Yeah, so, thank you for the question. Just to be clear, the system that is currently constructed is what was designed and approved originally. So everything that was part of our approved plan set for Homestead Village Phase 3D is constructed as approved and engineered. The reason why that lower portion did not get paved was when we originally constructed this back in fall of 2018, we did not have enough time to pave everything before November, before Thanksgiving, when the paving season effectively ends. So we broke it up into that smaller chunk. Well, springtime rolled around and ground levels came up and then it was, oh my goodness, hey, this pond, just like the other one, the groundwater has risen and it's not going to work as it was originally designed. So then the project got put on hold. We couldn't complete the lower portion of Domes Road because of the high groundwater and soft subgrade and now the inundation of groundwater in our storm pond. So after several meetings with Robert and Mike and everyone else and our engineers and geotecs, we came up with the CTV plan to build the road and get that part of it constructed. While we're still trying to figure out this stormwater issue to make this project right for everybody, and finally, here just in the last couple of months, and really, last month is when we fully agreed upon what we're going to construct, we had proposed that wet pond and the storm cells and the outfall back to Dome Creek. And it was sat around and reviewed and discussed and then we finally, last month, decided as a group, the city said, yes, let's move forward with that. It works for us, it works for them, and it works for everyone else in between. So we're just now getting that approval to go construct what we want to go and build, what the city wants to build. Otherwise, I would have loved to have had this thing built last summer when that pond was dry. I mean, ideally, that would have been the time to have this whole thing constructed, but we just didn't have the approvals, the agreement. We, you know, we're here today and we want to see it built just as badly as you do, but I'm just asking for a little bit more help. I'm just asking for a little bit more help. I mean, we do have everything built, what was originally approved and designed.
I would just clarify, I would just clarify that the storm pond itself was not approved, and we had the issues with that was designed. So, that part was...
It was approved, the design was approved. The city asks for a stormwater certification post-construction, and it was just during that certification post-construction, that high groundwater was noted, therefore...
Yes, correct, correct. Pretty hard to put a liner on water, so we decided we better do something different. Anyway, and part of the reason it's taken so long is two, right from the beginning of Phase 3, we really haven't had a good solution, and that's why there was an indemnity agreement aside from envisioning a future regional facility. It really has been a struggle, so.
Mr. Bobbitt?
So, am I correct in understanding, we do now have a plan for stormwater infrastructure to go in place that should take care of the issue, but we have to wait for this pond to dry out, which won't be till probably summer?
Yep.
And if we don't wait for that to be in place, we have a risk of possibly some settling of the road?
It's possible that that might exacerbate it. The other issues have to do with if the storm pond does not get done before occupancies come up, it just causes a hassle for the city in terms of having to tell people, no, you can't get in yet, and then that all ends up on staff shoulders at some level, although we, you know, Hayden Homes works to get that taken care of. I think the bottom line is, again, it's, we need to see that infrastructure in place. We've deferred several times on different portions of this phase. Let's get the storm facilities that support that area in, and then let's move on. There is a delay for Hayden Homes in terms of what they're planning? Three months?
If not more.
If not more, okay. But they do have, one of the reasons we went through this exercise is to open up 3E and make it available for them to work on something.
You know, I can appreciate that time is money, but I also can appreciate that here as a city, we've been dealing with trying to catch up with stormwater infrastructure as a city as a whole. So, I think we also understand the importance of making sure that infrastructure is in properly and ready to go rather than trying to go back and fix it. So, I would myself like to see the infrastructure in place before we allow any structures to go up, and just because I think that's so much work that we've already done, like I said, as a city. I feel, my opinion is, I'd like to see the infrastructure in place. Ms. Selby?
Excuse me, I actually have a different topic to bring up on the same thing, and that is item number four in the agreement, where it talks about the covenant's conditions and restrictions, and that the homeowners association or the individual homeowners are liable for maintaining the stormwater system. The thing that I'm concerned about is, although at the moment, wet ponds are basically the best treatment we know of for stormwater, other than like, you know, full-flutched reservoir treatment plant, and, but if EPA regulations or state regulations change in the future, who's going to bear the cost of having to change that? So, because we're going to be the owners, will that be us, or can we put something in there that says, yeah, we understand that the homeowners would say, we understand that we might have to do upgrades in the future?
I did a little bit, I did a little bit of looking at that this afternoon, and they are required to maintain it to the current stormwater manual standards. So, if those standards change and they do reflect the federal government, I guess a case could be made that, yes, they need to upgrade, but it's not solid in there. And if we want to do that, so we are the owners, it's a public-private facility, it's taking public waters off the streets, it's taking private water from the home, so it's a mixed facility. The way we set it up is really, we own it, we take care, we own the facilities once they're dedicated, and they're ours, and then they maintain it. If we want to push the burden of an upgrade in facilities onto the homeowners' association, then that's something maybe we should ask people on the CCRs. That's not something we really contemplated as a part of this? I mean, it's a good question.
Is it likely other communities in our city have the same issue, right? They have stormwater treatment, management, nothing else?
Well, Homestead kind of sits on its own as a large development with public-private facilities. The Garrison Village Way has private facilities, they take care of their own. So, for the most part, it's, this is kind of a one-off for us.
Ms. Selby had another question?
Actually, I would like to move to table this motion, or this item, until, to give Hayden Homes and staff time to look at the long-term issue and make a recommendation on that, and to look to see if there's some sort of even smaller phasing that might be able to kind of bridge the gap a little bit.
Okay.
So, I mean, I would hope that it would come back next meeting.
Can we have a motion to table? Do we have another motion?
Need a second?
You had a second? I just wanted to see if there was any other motions other than to table. So, we have a motion to table, and we have a second, and no other motions, so all in favor of tabling this discussion. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's do count.
So, all those ayes? First aye or in favor, maybe?
First to the table.
Free.
Three.
And against?
Free.
Well, I guess to break it.
I, my vote is not to table. So, do we need a motion?
We've got two more in, more motions.
Any other discussion or motion? Okay.
The table failed.
Can I just say one more thing?
Well, we're already in voting. Do we, yeah?
You can open for the session.
Please step forward.
Thank you. So, the one thing I would just like to point out further is, because this facility is already constructed, I mean, this is no different than the sewer lift station being constructed or having some other improvement out there that has failed. The roads have been constructed, we're constructing houses, we're moving people into houses, yet we're going to go out there and take care of a deficiency in the development of this community and take care of it in a timely manner. This, to me, and Hayden Homes is no different. I mean, this is a facility that's been constructed as designed and approved. There is a severe deficiency with it, and we all recognize that, and we acknowledge that we have to fix it, and we're prepared to fix it. It's not something that we're running from. We're here, there's sureties in place, and this is really no different than having a failure in some other portion of the project where a pipe has failed, and, I mean, we're not going to stop, the city wouldn't stop issuing building permits if the lift station failed, and we're fixing it out there for, you know, there's going to be workaround solutions. I mean, this, to me, is no different, just a little bit different.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do think it's important to have the infrastructure in place before any potential resident homeowners go looking, and we want to make sure that we have it ready to go for the entire area that it's serving. Mr. Bobbitt?
Did I understand correctly that you're willing to let them proceed on 3E?
Yes, 3E has already been approved for...
So, they're not standing still, but they have something to do with this?
Okay, so, Mr.?
I thought I heard you say something earlier. Let's assume for a minute we grant them what they want, Hayden Homes, and I appreciate your comments earlier. That's great. I mean, it's sincere. If we allow that, and now we've got seven lots here that are going to have homes on them before this is done, are they going to be able to get occupancy? Would they be able to occupy those?
That's part of the issue, is we would, we would not typically grant occupancy. And so, what you often have is you have homeowners trying to move in, and they have a signed agreement, or Hayden Homes has to actually deliver the home for them available with occupancy, and we're kind of caught between, we're in a hard spot.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the recommended action as written? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Sherman?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor or city administrator as it is needed to execute the stormwater agreement with Hayden Homes LLC addressing homes of Ekers Bay 3D stormwater and groundwater systems.
Okay, we have a first and a second to approve the recommended action. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in, Ms. Selby?
I just want to be clear that this, this motion would... I just want to be clear that this motion would not allow construction in 3D until the stormwater infrastructure is in place.
That is correct.
Okay, all in favor of the motion on the table, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, the motion is carried and adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you both. We appreciate all the information. Okay, Administrator Report Chief Winter, you're up.
I was hoping you guys were the last two of us. I've been trying to watch election results for EMS levy, nothing's in yet.
Oh, nothing's back?
Certainly.
And I know how much you enjoy sitting on these very comfortable chairs.
Mr. Rickard asked me to show you guys this.
Oh!
We received it.
Oh, look at that!
Wow!
That's our flag!
That's our flag! That's a City College Place flag!
Beautiful.
Very nice.
It's exciting.
When's it going to go up? Do we know?
After the win.
We're going to get a poll for when to go in here.
Are we going to do a thing?
I'm going to say a flag ceremony?
A flag cutting? No, that's not right.
A flag cutting ceremony. A flag raising ceremony.
So, where will they be placed?
I'll bring the vehicle.
I guess I don't have full information. One on the pole outside. I believe we've ordered enough to give one to each school.
Public and private, correct?
So, I don't have full information. I know we ordered enough to be distributing some.
Very nice. Long time coming, for sure.
So, in listening to the discussion this evening, I realized I'm very old. I kept going, the express, where is that? It's the dairy express. Sometimes as a kid, it's the dairy express. Even though the sign says the express, I took a second.
You've got to, is, did it used to be a dairy?
Yeah, the college dairy.
Uh-huh, and so that's where it's got its name from.
It was like the outlet store for the dairy.
Way back in the college days.
Yeah! The food was so good.
Because there was the scuba, she was doing cream shot.
So, now that we're all hungry and think we need dairy. So, I wasn't originally on the agenda to hand you this, but it got started to be distributed yesterday, and I didn't want you guys to wait another two weeks to get your coffee, because it doesn't go well when it hits the UV and all those things, and you go thin.
Yeah, we do appreciate.
So, this is the regionalization study that the three large fire agencies in the valley contributed to to get that done. I have a PDF version being mailed to me. It defeats the purpose of electronic, but the thumb drive will be mailed to me. So, we'll get that up on the website so that anybody who wants to can download that. You'll see at the very beginning of the study, there's a handout that the three chiefs felt we needed to put in there, so that before you get into the document and go, what? That doesn't make sense, we wanted some disclaimers in there. The first disclaimer is, this study was, is off of 2018 data. It may not be current of how we operate today because it's two years later. The second thing that's in there is, there wasn't a way for them to differentiate when running time statistics between, we went code to a call or we went non-emergency to a call. Therefore, the times are a little skewed on our response times. So, you may see, really, it took you eight minutes to go anywhere in College Place, or most of us would go, well, no, that's not feasible, that it would, I mean, I can get to Walmart and back in eight minutes, you know, which is where most of my volunteers hang out every day. So, we wanted that disclaimer in there. The third thing is, this document and its recommendations are based upon the best service delivery that the company thought we could pull off, and they weren't worried about So, it's really expensive, their recommendation in here. So, we have provided a, not the only one, but a org chart and preliminary, very high-level budget that does not align with the study. The study is millions and millions of dollars of more, it's another 25 personnel beyond, but this one is, because this is what you should have, and we're not, they're not going to jeopardize their reputation by saying, this is what you can afford. That's just how they write their study, and so we gave up arguing on that, you know, it's our document, we wanted to say what we wanted to say. So, we did run the numbers and made it a lot more palatable, hopefully. The other thing that you won't find in the study, and I'm happy to provide for you, is you're not going to find, we did a survey of everybody who wanted to participate could comment. Those comments are not in this document, I can provide those to you. But I think the feeling of the review group that looked at this was, those comments were made thinking no one would ever read them, because some of them were quite mean-spirited on both sides of the spectrum, and we really didn't want those to be the ones that got out. Oh, you know, we're, you know, chaos and all those things, when those aren't necessarily factual things. It is published record, and if you want to look at those, you're certainly welcome. There weren't a lot of feedbacks, but obviously, your extremes are what usually answer surveys. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Sherman?
What kind of non-extreme comments, concerns did you receive in the survey? Like, just broadly, I guess? Don't ruin the surprise.
Yeah, some of the, of the surveys that aren't in here, some of the weird ones is, we have old turnouts and we need new ones. Well, that's not relevant to anything that we asked the question of. Some of them were, I feel, I feel things are good the way they are, we only need to fix a few things, we don't need to, you know, fix the whole thing. You know, just some of those comments.
But that one's like in favor of...
I think, I think the stats are in here of what was in favor and what wasn't. I don't remember that with my cold medication at the moment, to say what that was. It was more favorable than non from the people who did fill out the survey.
From all three agencies?
It doesn't, it doesn't disseminate that.
Mr. Peterson?
So, what's the value of this? If it is so financially overstated, it was required, refresh my memory, it was required to do this, it was not required to do this, we did this, so, and you guys have generated a separate set of figures compiled by all three agencies together. And so, this step is a step we took, but if it's so wildly off, we'll be of limited And so this step is a step we took, but if it's so wildly off, will be of limited use?
So I think the only thing that is of limited use is the staffing model they put in here was if we were the Walton Valley Fire Department, which is 60 stations, it's the largest fire agency in Oregon.
It serves about 250,000 people.
Which, yes, we would love that and we would love to strive towards that. But in order to do that, the cost for College Place was a 78% increase in what we pay today and that just does not...
Well, it wasn't for 250, was it the ratios or was it for...
It was very, the org chart was extremely top-heavy.
I see, okay.
So it was, there was a chief, an assistant chief, and a deputy chief and a deputy of the deputy chief.
And then a battalion, a battalion of the...
Yeah, it was just really, really heavy. Our proposal was still to add some folks.
But not at a 250,000, oh, really?
Correct. So the, our belief is if we decide to continue in this process, that there would be four stations within the valley with four people in them 24/7. So our station, which we currently have one person, District 4's stationed out by Prospect Point, the station on Poplar and the station on Wilbur.
Was that pretty much the consensus of the three chiefs? I mean, because I understand this is bigger than what we need, correct? Is that the...
Well, this, the, the, three-quarters of this is how they came up with what their recommendation was. So it's run stats, it's where we are today, what time of day is the best, you know, most likely to have a call out of College Place? You know, water pay for everybody is right now, how many volunteers are there, what color are your fire trucks? All that kind of data stuff to come up with their recommendation. The recommendation portion is, you know, maybe that much of here. You know, and they have recommendations in here of what they had. They have a lot of recommendations and then they chose the one they thought was most suitable for us. So, I think I saw it.
I'm trying to understand. At first I thought this thing was a, let's consolidate, save money. Now it looks like it's upgrading Valley Fire Services to federal super public. Is there one objective or...
Sure, so there's no way to save money providing fire and EMS, it's very expensive. Whether we consolidate or we don't, it's just going to get more expensive. There's not a way around that. I think the object of looking at this is, and I've talked about this before, is we need to be good stewards of our community and we need to constantly be looking at, are we doing this the best way delivery-wise and controlling costs as much as possible? And so that was what the feasibility study was to come up with is, does it make sense? And if it makes sense, how should that come together? Now, you're going to read through this and, you know, I want you to come up with your own opinions and all that. And we're not 100% sold either way of whether I think it can be done. This is my fifth try at it. I was talking to another department, they paid for a consultant 21 times before they finally merged. I hope, I'll be retired before we get to 21. Because on the thought process, it seems a little silly that there's three agencies crossing each other to go to calls. I mean, that just, that isn't the best utilization of resources.
I still don't understand whether this is designed to give us better service.
Better service.
So you went into this saying that service was inadequate?
No.
We just could do, it could just be done better.
Could be done more efficiently.
I think there was some discussion...
That translates to a tangible benefit and I'm starting...
Well, I mean, you can probably change my thing. So part of this, their original, or some of the conversation that we heard on this was a lot of the duplicity that exists in either overhead costs and personnel and other things to be running. So I think that's going to, it can cut down on costs, but really those resources are needed elsewhere if you're actually providing services as well.
Yeah, we have three chiefs, three training officers, three prevention offices.
Mr. Peterson and then Ms. Selby?
Isn't there also an issue with capital cost and that's part of the redundancy that is? The allocation of what fire trucks you want to purchase and where you want to have them placed versus everyone trying to duplicate everyone's efforts as far as capital costs do, so, you know?
Everybody has a reserve engine.
Yeah, right.
So there are cost savings on those parts.
Yeah, I mean...
Ms. Selby and then Mr. Bobbitt?
So my understanding before this, since I haven't read this yet, was that...
It's a page turner.
Was that there were, we thought that there were some savings of scale. However, we also saw costs going up rapidly enough that it wouldn't really save us much, but it would, it would keep it from increasing as much.
Slow it down.
And then thirdly, there are different ways of providing the service, some of which cost more than others. And if we even them all out, it will maybe make one a little less and one a little more. And I think we were on the side of it would make it more.
College Place currently is the least funded per household of the three, yes.
Mr. Bobbitt?
So basically, we want to look at options for future cooperative services paid as well as 2175? Get a thumbnail of some of the options?
Yeah.
The rest kind of describes how we got there.
And so what we're looking at is, is to take some of the recommendations in here and start doing some of those things, the things that don't necessarily cost money. Putting all three training officers in the same building, putting our prevention people together, those types of things, softening some of our boundaries, you know? Doesn't make sense for Station 41 to come all the way over here to, for an ambulance call if it's a be-honest call and I'm sitting here. You know, they passed three fire stations to get here.
So, I'm sorry, so what is the, what do you, is that a realistic change that you think could happen outside of doing this RFA?
So I think we're, right now, we're, we want to test the waters per se. We want you guys to digest this for a bit and then come back with, hey, let's try these things for this amount of time. And at the end of that time, it either worked or didn't. And make a decision, do we continue to move forward at whatever pace that is? Or we go back to doing business as normal?
So who decides that this testing the waters?
Well, the three...
The three?
The three entities. So you all...
They're all okay. Melissa?
Yeah?
I'd like to say something.
Ms. Sherman?
I've been on the council a long time. And there was a time that, years ago, that we were thinking of getting our fires through Walla Walla. And thankfully we didn't and I want to thank you, Chief Winter, you've done a good job with our fire department.
Thank you.
Excellent, and it belongs to College Place. Thank you.
I appreciate that sentiment. There are some hurdles that I can't fix at the moment. And that's, for me, a big reason to look at this.
And we're here to help you.
I appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, I think you gave us our homework.
Good.
Maybe you can mail us the PDF when you get it?
I can do two large.
You can mail. I would like him to send it in the mail.
You can, you can just put it on our Google Drive and share it with me.
I have all the versions up to this on a Dropbox.
A four-terabyte file, yeah.
I have all the drafts on a Dropbox.
Ms. Selby?
I would like to move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have first and second, all in favor of adjourned the meeting? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much, the meeting is adjourned.
Is this okay?